Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we can stay standing and have a moment of silence for at the count now the 21 people that were murdered in Texas, children, two adults. This country needs a lot of prayer. Thank you. It's just so sad what's going on. All right, this is Mahoney County Commissioner's hearing room, regular meeting number 21, Thursday, May 26, 2022, 10:00 a.m. And we are going to start with public comments. We have a very heavy schedule today, so we're only going to be giving two minutes. Anybody who have public comments, please get to go to the podium, state your name and your your address. Hearing none?
No, I will be very quick. My name is Nai, and I do not wish to discuss my address, if that's okay. I'm just here to ask that the Mahoney County Jobs and Family Services be open, so I can apply for food stamp in person. I don't have a phone. And also, would you please establish a senior center and a recreational center for older people and young people, so they can have places to go and they don't have to pay money?
Okay, we will take care of that.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also have a sheet that I have written my request in case my words fail me. So can I give you the sheet?
Yes, you can give it to Nancy La Boy, and then we thank you for coming. We will, we will pass that on to JFS. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You know where JFS is, right? Johnson Family Services is on Oak Hill.
Five times already, it's still not open.
Well, I believe that.
Just yesterday. Oh, I also have a question, is your curiosity, why is, why is this meeting recorded like that? Is this is just work, right? Is, does it have to be recorded?
Yes. Because we have this online, so if you wanted to go back and, and hear what you wanted, what you said today, so you could be sure of what your comments were, you could go to our website and see the meeting.
We have to make sure what your comments are.
Well, I mean, if people see the business, right? Of, of the county that don't make it down.
Do you want to take minutes? If you take minutes, you don't have to.
All right, well, that, that's something we decided, and we thank you.
Audrey Morales?
Yes, sir. Yes.
What is an individual to do that needs a file for food stamps, doesn't have a phone? The public can't come in to JFS and, and fill out papers? Someone that's, doesn't have the ability to call in?
Well, we do have online, but if they don't have online computers or they do not have a phone, I will allow that person to come to door A entrance, speak with security, let them know they do not have a phone, they do not have a computer, and they need to speak with Rebecca Gerson, Audrey Morales, and someone will come down and meet that individual and take that information. They will have to go through the entrance.
Give it to her.
Door A. Thank you, Audrey.
Well, make sure they go through the entrance where security is. We have security here. They will let security know.
Door A.
Door A. Okay, door A.
She's gonna write it down for you.
Which one?
Right here, do you want to walk over there and she'll write everything down and give it to you?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right.
Okay.
You could go out, Holly, and give that to her. Sorry, anybody else, public comments? All right. Approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number 20, Thursday, May 19, 2022, and approval of bills for payment, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number one, advertisement for bids, lead?
Morning Commissioners, this is a advertisement for bid being released for 216 Elm Street for chip rehab and lead hazard control work in Strouders, Ohio, 44471.
Okay, thank you. Number, advertisement for bids, number one, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve advertisement for bids. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number, legal notices, number one, O M B Grants, Anna?
Morning Commissioners, this item is a request for proposals for the Mahoney County CBVG Program Administration Services.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Motion to approve legal notices, number one.
Motion to approve legal notices. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number one, journal entries, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve general entries. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number two, agreements, A through J, A being auditors.
Alex was up there.
Alex? Alex, unmute your phone. Or your.
You might have stepped away.
Okay, go ahead, Audrey.
Commissioners, this is agreement with Safran Test's Measure, Purple Ten, Fabricator E2, purchase 240 gallon cowboy testing unit for the weights and measures vehicle in the amount of $27,010.
And J, Case here as well.
Yes, I'm here to speak directly to that if you had any questions.
Oh, okay. Do you want to say anything? It's up to you.
I was just here to specifically, if you had any concerns or questions about it, answer it.
I never heard of that. What do they use?
Well, right now, typically, we, what we do is, we measure anything with time. There's so many.
Yeah, I mean, what, what's the 240 gallon calibration?
Okay, so, right now, how we've done it for years is every gas pump, you fill five gallons, and I have two jugs, and you have to carry them all the way back over and dump. And it's very time consuming. It's also like a Speedway where you have 80 different pumps, that's 2,400 pounds. So what happens is this unit, you test, you unload into those storage tanks, and then you drive over and you dump them back in. So what if, it's gonna triple the production, it's gonna save wear and tear on me, and it's also gonna allow us to do more inspections in a more timely manner, as well as, there's so many things that we don't even touch upon in this county, package checking, and stuff that really matters to the consumer. So it's gonna free up, you know, we'll get more done with less. And in the past, they used to hire people in the summer to help with the
Carrying.
muscle end of it. Well, we're gonna do away with that, you know, and it's.
Well, how are you gonna stay slim and chimp now, then?
Well, don't you worry. I got plenty of work to do, plenty of work.
That's pretty cool. Thanks for giving us a little insight.
Yeah, I didn't know.
He goes to all the grocery stores and does all the scales as well.
Scales, vehicle truck scales, package checking, there's so much stuff.
If, if they test the scales that weigh, like the lunch meat and stuff on, me and Anthony will go around do that. You know, put five pounds on, we'll wolf down, I'll get the corned beef. You can have the, all those foul.
Cabo go.
Yeah, those ones.
Right.
All righty, now that we'll move on. Convention and Fisher Bureau, Tara?
Good morning. This is an advertising agreement with AAA Club Alliance, which publishes AAA World Magazine. This is for our print ad in the July, August, and September, October issues, plus digital advertising and four weekly emails to AAA members. The estimated total is $4,495, and it is non-general.
Thank you. C and D, Audrey, Jobs and Family Services.
Good morning Commissioners, good morning Nancy, Audrey. C, Job and Family Service Amendment Number One with Oasis Commercial Cleaning, to provide cleaning services for APS clients in the additional amount of 2,000, non-general. Letter D, Job and Family Services, this is a sub-grant agreement with Juvenile Justice Center to administer the 2022 Ten of Summer Youth Employment Program in the amount of $800,000, also non-general.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. E through H, lead, Phil?
E is an agreement with W and W Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes work in, at 216, 2615 Taft, in the amount of $15,450, non-general. F is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 1130 Norwood, in the amount of $15,475, also non-general. G is an agreement with W and W Construction for chip repair work at 529 Devitt, in the amount of $12,000, also non-general. And H is an agreement with American Pinnacle for chip home repair work, 7456 Rainier Trail, in the amount of $14,825, also non-general.
Okay, thank you. I and J, Tara?
Good morning, everyone. I is an agreement with Burns Industrial Equipment for an emergency forklift repair at the Meander Waste Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $1,595.02, non-general. J is an agreement with Utility Contracting, Inc. for an emergency eight-inch sewer main line repair near the intersection of Cole Court and Milton Avenue in the amount of $4,193.08, also non-general.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Number two, agreements, A through J, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve agreements. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number three, change orders, A, B, and C, lead?
A, C, A through C are all change orders for lead hazard, additional lead hazard control work. A is with D2 Construction at 531 West Myrtle, in the amount of $1,200. B is a change order with D2 Construction at 420 Ferndale, in the amount of $2,000. And C is a change order for American Pinnacle Construction, 2455 Change Circle, in the amount of $1,650, all non-general.
Thank you. Three, change orders, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve change orders. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Resolutions, number one, additions, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve resolutions, number one, additions. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number two, record of bids, A, engineers, Rick?
Good morning Commissioners, this is a rebid for our pavement planning, asphalt, layover, and pavement markings for various sections of roadways, 15.47 miles.
Thank you. Number two, record of bids, A, right here.
Motion to approve record of bids. Second?
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number three, resolutions. A is Commissioners, O, B, Audrey?
Commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing the lease agreement with I and Balance E for space at Mahoney Valley Cancer Care.
And they're in what, building eight?
Uh, eight. Building 12.
Building 12. And B has mat? Has mat? Rule.
Handle that.
Anna?
Good morning Commissioners. You want me to do hazmat?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The approval of two resolutions to certify cost for recovery to the prosecutor's office due to unauthorized spill, release, or discharge into or upon the environment as follows. April 23, 2022, a junkyard fire in Gerard, Ohio, claim $4,483.43. And on April 26, 2022, roadway paint incident north in town, claim of $2,075.85.
Okay, Anna, the next one?
Item C is an application to the Office of Ohio Criminal Justice Services for the 2022 VAWA Award in the amount of $60,000, with a cash match of $20,000 being made by the Special Project Office of Domestic Relations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
D, sanitary, Tara?
This is a resolution approving economic adjustments for the non-union employees based on the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, E, Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, everyone. E is a resolution to reject all bids received on Wednesday, May 4 of this year. Record bids, resolution number 22-05-21 for the Comprehensive Health and Mental Health Addiction Services for inmates. And F is a resolution in support of an application for fiscal year 2022, the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant through the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $60,000 with a 10% match.
Thank you. And I want you to know, that when I looked at that, I said, you know, I really don't know how this grant started. So I went online, Audrey says, what are you doing, looking at all the it's and you're looking everything up online? But I, I was interested in that, and I did look that up, and that was about a fallen officer, actually. His family was, were all police officers. And he was 22 years old, went through the academy, was doing a surveillance at a home in New York, where he served with this, the rest of the family, and two, two guys come up to the car and just unloaded, shot him to death right there. And, and he was protecting a witness, witness protection for trial with a gang. I mean, this is just, this just shows, this has, this, this was 2003. And we've just escalated to where we are today. It's just terrible, what's happening. I don't know how we, how we change mentality to some people to get. It's terrible, I mean.
Just give it a concealed carry permit, let everybody carry a gun, huh?
Well, I think.
Unbelievable.
You need to have some rules in place, not taking away anyone's rights, but you need to show them that cops really mean something, that they are the authority that's protecting us. I mean, I don't get it. This, this grant, up till date, just this year, over $272 million. There's $7 billion in this grant that they raised. So I'm, I'm glad that, I mean, I, I just hit me, and I said, every year we vote on this, let me check it out and see what it is. So, that's a good, the family went and did a lot with the help of everybody else.
You know, people say, you know, I, I get feedback when I say it's ridiculous to take, just make it an open carry state, you don't have to get a concealed carry permit. Oh, well, people that, that are gonna shoot people up aren't gonna get a permit anyway. But you know, the fact that when you pull, when an officer pulls someone over, and you find a gun, and you don't have a permit, you can take them to jail. You know, so it gives them authority to do things. And the fact that, you know, of all of the thousands of permits that we put out there, six or 700 annually are denied, because they don't have, that they have either a felony or they have something in their record or history that precludes them from being able to get a permit. So you do stop individuals from getting it, so those people become more vulnerable, if they do get pulled over, to be able to go further if they have a gun, you know?
Right.
It's just the, the, the situation that we continue to put our police officers in, the vulnerable situations is appalling, you know, and, and, I mean, the fact that their job's dangerous enough, we shouldn't add to the equation. My personal feeling.
It's sad. So, number three resolutions, A through F, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve resolutions, second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. And that concludes our meeting. I'm sorry, I, I got into that there, but I mean, it was, I just, I couldn't, I mean, it was unbelievable. I had printed out at home, I sat there and I read the whole thing, and I went, wow. How sad is that? I mean, I don't even know how a parent would feel, husband or wife.
I mean, how, how can you, I don't know, it would really test your faith, you know, to wake up and send your, your middle school kid to school and get a call that he was shot.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I, I don't. I can't even fathom that, as a parent, you know?
Think how scary that is. I mean, even for, like, parents today, even here, I mean, mental illness is, is, it's an illness like cancer, heart, sugar, diabetes, whatever. But we still seem to think it's, we should hide that, and that's not the way it should be. I mean, signs of that are always out there, that the parent or the guardian has to look at that. So you know what, let me hurry up and do something, maybe this will help a situation. No matter what, this, this is the killer, right here. These kids, social media is, I mean, and I don't mean that, like, we shouldn't have it, we should have it. We're, we're moving into a new generation of this, but we got, we still have to remember what's there from the past generation, so we can merge something and make sense of it. This is crazy. I mean, I don't even know what to say. It just, you, you, you lose, you lost for words, what's happening today. I mean, it is sad. I mean, I don't know how I'd feel, how I would live if I got that call to come to school and have to deal with that. I, I just don't know how I would be able to live. I mean, it's, it's terrible. And I mean, I, and I'm just gonna say, I'll turn it over to my two partners. Have a safe Memorial Day, say prayers for fallen officers, the fallen veterans, soldiers, the war craziness that's going on in our country today. We need, we need God in our lives. I know I'm not up here to preach, but we need something. Anyway, David, Anthony, I need my sermon.
Well, Hannah, we want to welcome Hannah here, she's our new intern, right? And so you're gonna get indoctrinated by a lot of politicians, so you're in big trouble. So, do you wanna say who you are and tell us a little bit about your background, or what you're going to school for? Go ahead, we'll put you on the spot to introduce yourself, Hannah.
My name is Hannah Walls. I graduate Y S U, May 2023, with my bachelor's in criminal justice legal processing, and then I will be going to Akron or Cincinnati to complete a law degree.
Good, wow, wow, good for you.
Fantastic, that's pretty good, you know, it's.
My God, and you're here with us, just think all the good things you're gonna learn when you go there.
Just remember what they tell you in school, what happens in the county stays in the county.
Anthony?
Yeah, congratulations and welcome.
I also want to congratulate you, I was a criminal justice major, and you'll have definitely enough experience here when you get to law school to understand what's going on. Sometimes laws don't apply to certain things in certain areas, but you'll figure that out, but we welcome you here. But the, going what Carol was saying, you know, how, how do you, as a young person, 18 years old, wake up in the morning and say, I'm gonna shoot my grandmother in the face, and then I'm gonna go kill 21 people? Who in their right mind would wake up to do that? When I was in school, and maybe most of us, we'd wake up about football practice, or prom, going to a rock concert, playing guitars, playing football. I, I don't know what's happened either, and I have to agree with Carol, with the social media. I mean, it is definitely mental illness, and I, and I don't want to get into debate about guns. You know, I'm a believer in the Second Amendment, but I do believe that people should have to apply for a permit and go through a background check like we do when we apply for insurance, we apply for a car license, a vendor license, it doesn't hurt anybody to go through the training course. A hunting license. I don't understand how anybody in their right mind would pass a law like that. But again, this is, seems to be perpetuating, it's not stopping. It seems to be getting worse, and the tone in this country is brutal. You gotta understand what people are dealing with now, high inflation, high gas prices. We just got out of a pandemic, people are stressed, everybody started focusing on the computer and playing these crazy games. I remember when I taught at Y S U, I had students up there that talked nothing about all these, all these games that they were playing, and they would stay up late at night, not do their homework, but would play these games where, you know, you kill people. I mean, how many times or how many ways can you decapitate a person in a game? And I just think, impressionably, without a good, strong family social structure, that these games are starting to step in, and some of these young people are letting it get in their heads. Who would wake up and say, I'm going to do this? But let's not forget our police officers who put their lives on the line to stop this maniac. You know, as a Border Patrol agent, I heard it shot him, and the police ran right into the gunfire. But if I was a parent, I would be very afraid these days to send my, my children to school, because you, you just don't know, look at Louisville. And the sheriff's office was right on that, when that shooting happened down there, and the Louisville police chief, you know, the cops can only do so much to stop the violence, but something needs to be done with mental illness. And Carol has said this over and over, she, she talked about the grant today. You know, imagine if there was maybe not that much money, maybe there would be higher incidence of rates if it wasn't for these social programs. I believe in counseling, mental illness, addiction service. You know, everybody has a second chance at life, but we've gotta help our young people. This is out of control, this is just crazy. So, without be saying that, one more thing I wanted to say on a better note, I don't know if you know that Youngstown was the, was mentioned as the top 10 place to live in the country.
I saw that.
And U S News and World Report says it's the fourth best place to live in Ohio, and the 10th cheapest. I think that speaks volumes for our community in inviting people here. And I just wanted to say that because, you know, we're very proud of our city, and we want people to come here. So, happy Memorial Day, thank you all.
Yeah, I didn't hear that, that, was that an article?
Yeah, U S News and World Report.
I saw it on, while I was searching the web for all of this, and I did see, and I don't go on the internet, but.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I, I don't know what to add to Anthony and Carol, but, you know, it's just like, you know, Steve Kerr said, you know, which, I don't know if you got an opportunity, you know, I, I didn't hear the shooting initially, and I put on the TV, and Steve Kerr's on there going in, he's the coach of the Golden State Warriors. And he got up, and he was at a press conference, precluding before the game was supposed to go on, and all he did was talk about the shooting, and saying that, you know, 90% of people believe in background checks, and the 50 senators are not allowing it to go to a vote, you know, to come out of committee. And he, and he just, he really preached for probably five minutes on, you know, the, how appalling it is that we have politicians for their own self-serving interest refuse to let the American people have what they, obviously, the majority desire, 80 or 90%, I've, I've heard two different numbers, just like Anthony. You know, he's a, you know, he's a, he used to sell, he used to have a gun license, you know, and, and so Anthony, you know, believes in guns, as we all do, but he also believe in, you know, having the ability to, to get background checks. This individual that shot people, he got, he bought the gun a few days earlier, he just went and bought it. You know, and, and it, it was semi-automatic, too, you know, I mean, and, and it's, it's just, yeah, it's just crazy.
And it had reloads.
That things like that can happen, you know, and, and, you know, like the, the Edward Byrne, is it Byrne?
Yes.
I mean, it's, you know, and, and we have our own, and we're burning in my cards, you know, I mean, you know, there's an individual who started out in Austintown, I got to swear in, you know, when I was a trustee, and got an opportunity, you know, because opportunities to become police officers are few and far between, full-time. We had an auxiliary program there that he belonged to, and he went to Youngstown to get a, you know, a full-time job, luckily. And, you know, and, and, I mean, it's, it's. And, you know, and and, I mean, it's, it's oversaid, but, you know, people that wake up this morning expect to come home and have dinner tonight, you know. And whether it's our our children, our families, our friends, um, you know, it's something that we all need to do our part in and, you know, do a better job. Um, Memorial Day, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, time to honor our veterans, our fallen veterans, and and, uh, you know, I I like to speak the opportunities I've had. I've been blessed in previous public sector jobs to travel, you know, to Korea and to Europe and to Belgium, and and, uh, I've been to the Korean War Memorial three times. Um, blessed because I've never seen it all at any one time, you know, and I remember bringing back, uh, dallians from the War Memorial there, uh, for the Korean War veterans in Austintown that were collecting money to build a monument in, uh, with the park. And how proud I was to be able to go there, you know, and honor the veterans and, you know, and and, uh, there's a, there's city block after city block after city block. That's how how large the, in in Seoul, Korea, the War Memorial is. And there's a globe probably as big as this room, and it has like a lightning bolt or a zigzag split down the globe, and it has a soldier on each side, and it depicts North and South Korea, and it's titled A World Divided. And it's like we have our, uh, memorial with the Vietnam Wall with all the names of the the soldiers that were killed. They have theirs, too. And if I remember correctly, I think there's three million names that they have between North and South Korea, you know. So, I mean, it's been going on forever, and, you know, and unfortunately, we have people like a Putin or, you know, those individuals that lead our countries and and create the Ukraine and the stuff that's going on, you know, when we have a tough time protecting, you know, our children, you know, so many innocent people have been, have been killed. So, uh, thank a veteran, not only on Memorial Day, but every day, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Traficanty?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidi Agati?
Yes, next meeting, June second. Oh, my God, Thursday, June second.
Pretty soon it'll be snowing.
I know.
Halloween.
Thank you. Please have a nice Memorial Day. Be safe. Go to a service.